All right, we're happy to have our district prosecutor attorney, Mr. Frank Spain with us. Frank, do you mind just stepping up here? And I promised him I wouldn't call him up here to make him testify and be too cruel and on him very thing.
Oh, true, but it's true.
That's right. And just for everybody's refresher, that's kind of what we're talking about here, issues we've been talking about off and on for a while. And that is the problems that we're dealing with in a number of cases throughout town with, well, I guess you would call homeless people. And I want to tell you that we even had a private meeting with one of our circuit judges just to get their thoughts on, you know, how the city should deal with some of these issues. And it was made real clear to me that being homeless is not a violation of the law. And we understand that. We're not trying to, I don't think anybody here is trying to come down hard on people that are, you know, down on their luck or have mental issues or substance abuse issues. But we're just running into a lot of problems. The public is, we were hearing a lot from people about these individuals. The police department has told me that based upon just their observations, and we're not out there trying to play like a secret police, but obviously we get calls, we run into these people quite a bit, and we won't, you know, we're trying to keep up with about how many they are. They move around. Of course, we ask them to leave private property if you own public property, city parks, things like that. And they are telling us it's a difficult thing to deal with. Mr. Prosecutor, we just wanted you to come and give us your thoughts on how, from a law enforcement standpoint, that we need to deal with these issues. And let the council ask you any questions.
Okay.
You're our main chief law enforcement officer in this district, and figured you could help us. And I know there's been a Supreme Court ruling also on this issue.
What I gave was a copy of the Supreme Court case that just came out within the last couple of weeks. And it's City of Branch, Mass. versus Johnson. So the United States Supreme Court addressed a similar issue involving, and we're not talking about homeless people in this particular instance, what we're talking about is anybody, homeless or not, camping on public property. And it may affect the homeless, but the statute in that, or statute would be ordinance written in that particular instance, was written so that it covered anybody doing that regardless of whether or not they're homeless. As the mayor said, homelessness is a status. And a status like that is not something that's illegal. It is a person violating either an Arkansas statute or potentially a Warren City ordinance. And in this particular case, there was a city ordinance about either a sleeping on public property. The second part was camping on public property. And then what they talked about was specifically camping or overnight parking in city parks. And so what they did is they made it a violation of city ordinance, a criminal ordinance, to either sleep on a public sidewalk or street, to camp on public property, or to stay overnight in your car, or in a tent in a public park. And what I would say, if that is something that y'all are interested in doing, I would suggest that you contact the municipal league, which I assume you're already members of, and get them to help you draft it. Because what this particular case ultimately came down to was an argument about where this started out west. And in particular, it went through some federal attacks where people were saying that it was in violation of the Eighth Amendment, that it was cruel or unusual punishment to prosecute somebody for being homeless. Of course, again, the Supreme Court says that's not what this statute does. It doesn't, it does not prosecute the homeless. It prosecutes people for camping or sleeping in the street or sidewalk, and it could be anybody. It could be, it could be the mayor, it could be somebody who's homeless. Any of those people doing it would be violating that law. It's not based upon somebody specifically being homeless. And so any ordinance that you draft has to keep that in mind because trying to do something based upon status such as being homeless would be a violation of the Constitution under the Eighth Amendment. There's some similar case law about, and they talk about it in this case that I gave you, about trying to criminalize being an addict versus possessing or using controlled substances. Possessing, using controlled substances is illegal and is fully prosecutable. Being an addict is not. That's more of a status type of, you know, one of the justices says that was wrong, really, but that's not what the majority says. And so now, you can, there are other ways to combat people who are in these situations. And I would say combat, because maybe they need help. The mayor said that maybe when I talked to him before, that some of these people maybe actually have either drug addiction problems or they have mental illnesses. Now fortunately, right now, maybe this is a good example. We're, we have been hitting hundred degree weather where people are being exposed. And if you're sleeping outside because you have a drug addiction problem or you have a mental illness, there are steps, in particular, my office can take, there are something called drug and alcohol commitments and mental commitments. For us to be able to pursue those types of commitments, the people have to be homicidal, I'm going to use the terms that are in the statutes, homicidal, suicidal, or greatly disabled. And that means they have to either suffer from a mental illness or their drug addiction puts them in a place that they are either dangerous to themselves or others. And in particular, like a good example, somebody who's greatly disabled, they may be so high they walk out in front of traffic. They might be so mentally ill that they don't perceive the danger of walking out of traffic. And those are people that if the police will get into custody on a temporary, like, hey, I'm trying to make sure you're okay. Delta Counseling is an agency here that has a contract with the state of Arkansas. They are supposed to have an on-call screener to come to screen these individuals and to facilitate us getting them put into places for treatment. And then they will work with the deputies that I have assigned to this, to these types of tasks. And if for some reason you can't get hold of my deputy, he's assigned over here, you can always call, they can always call my office. But what we are, these aren't long-term types of treatments. They are very short-term. They start off with mental health ones are about 72 hours. The drug and alcohol ones can be up to a week in the beginning. Those times can be extended.
Mr. Prosecutor, I don't want to cut you off because I appreciate the information you've provided, but you're about to get to the meat of the issue here. How, first, and the circuit judge, if we had a police, and I'll say obvious, if we had, basically said exactly what you said. We can bring them before your office or, and get them, or a judge will order them or send them somewhere to get, you know, checked out for mental health. How do we know that? I mean, if these people don't walk up to us and say, you know, I'm thinking about killing somebody, or I'm thinking about killing myself, most of them just hang around out there, they go through garbage containers, they, you know, I mean, it's, they're not all acting out a crime, so to speak.
The way you're going to do that is through either community telling you, hey, the community saying, hey, something's going on, or active police involvement when they see these people. Or even city employees that see these people that would say, hey, I saw somebody doing this and I stopped talking, and they didn't sound like it.
Well, can I, can I give you an example?
Sure.
And counsel, I want you all to ask questions, but I've been out there and I've talked to some of these people. It takes about 30 seconds to figure out if there's something wrong or not because of their, you know, their speech, their, and I'll give you a classic example, we got some that got to hang around on a public city park. Now, nobody's, to my knowledge, tried to hurt anybody. They locked themselves in the bathroom down there and used it for a personal, you know, place to clean up, location, stuff like that. They scare people. Obviously, a lot of people won't bring their kids down there because it scares them if they see one or two or three of these people down there. There was a young lady that I knew had been out on the streets. I was down there one day walking, and I decided I was just going to approach her and see what I could. I told her who I was, straight up. She was sitting on the steps of the RV Zippo with a big Bible looking at it. And I just asked her, I said, do you not have a home, any place to stay? And she basically told me, no, she didn't. She, well, actually is a native of Bradley County. I found that out, not Warren, but another location in the county. Apparently, family had cut ties with her. She looked pretty rough, to say the least, but I know you can't just profile people, but nevertheless. So I was just trying to ask her a few questions. And in between reading, looking at the Bible, and telling me God was going to take care of her, she said it over and over again, and then she cut loose cussing me like a yard dog. And then she'd talk about the Bible and God, and she's, I mean vulgar. My point is, it don't take much to figure out that there's something, problem with these, so, but then I'm getting told, and my policemen are very gun shy at this, because they'll haul in somebody in and then being said, you illegally brought these people in.
Well, we're, again, we're talking about a scenario where maybe they're not under arrest, they're being detained.
Oh, sure.
And you're, and we're talking about a different type of scenario. They need to have articulable reasons why they did that, why they did the things like, what occurred that led you to decide you needed to take this person into custody, get her screened? Now, I'm going to say the flip side of that, and one of the things that I have dealt with personally, is that Delta Counseling doesn't always want to send somebody over here to screen somebody. I had, the last time I had somebody over in this county that needed to be screened, I basically had to threaten to get them to get over here.
That's unsatisfactory, to be perfectly.
Right. And I was told that they're supposed to have someone, by the person who's supposed to be doing the screening, they're supposed to have somebody there within an hour. Okay? And it's my understanding, because I lived in Gardendale, we dealt with a different agency over there that had this same sort of contract, they have a like 24-hour number that you could call, that they would get a screener. So if it's in the middle of the night or whatever, if you're not holding somebody in lockup all night. So I finally had to like convince an officer to stay one more hour and get them to come over here. Now, I get the feeling, I can't prove this to you, that they don't think that they have to do this on a 24-hour basis. But that's my understanding of what.
Well, what do we need to do about that? They have a contract with the state of Arkansas, they should be doing it.
Well, we would need to know or be able to build a case to show the state of Arkansas that they're not doing what they say they're doing.
Well, I really don't have the personal experience of them not reacting to something like that.
It may just, it may just been that one time.
The issue we've got is how far can our police department go in bringing these votes before a judge to get an assessment of?
There's a couple of things that can happen. They can take somebody into custody because they think that they're the mental health issue here. And they may take them to the hospital. My guess is the hospital's going to easily let them go because they don't want to deal with them. Although there are certain protections under the statutes, I appreciate for the hospitals who are dealing with people that they think are mentally, or they can take them somewhere where they can hold them until the screener can come, or they can make contact with the screener and, or contact our office and say, hey, we want to get in order to get this person picked up.
Can you tell us who in your office we should contact when we run into a situation like this?
The person who's assigned to do this is the prosecutor, that's the district court, and I won't kind of have to say his name, I can suck on it, Barton.
With, not with, but Ben.
Ben, right. Ben is the deputy assigned to do this. But sometimes, if he's not available, then Ms. Pamblin or you should call directly to my office.
But we have the right to give him or somebody in your office a call and say, here's what we think we got, and we need to do something.
Right. But again, these definitions we're talking about are pretty particular, okay? They have to be, you don't have to say, I'm going to kill somebody, or I'm thinking about killing myself, maybe that's sufficient. You get what I'm saying?
Sure.
So we need to, the officers need to be able to say, this is what is going on. Of course, that requires your officers to get out and make contact with the people. That's a part of, part of what I would call community policing is, some people think, well, you get out and talk to them, well, you're harassing them. No, I'm talking to you. No, Daniel. And a lot of that, I can understand why some officers might be gun shy about wanting to be in these situations.
Let me tell you another thing, and you mentioned this already. In a couple of cases, we've had people that for different reasons, we have been able to get a judge to, you know, send them for treatment. They write back in just a few days and not a few hours, and they're right back where they were again. They're not solving the problem.
Well, and that's one of the problems I would say is wrong with the mental commitment and drug and alcohol commitment is primarily a duty of the prosecutor attorney's office because it has been that way historically, because you're talking about taking away somebody's liberty. The system is not designed to take these people and move them over to where maybe they would get some help by the Department of Human Services. Sometimes we have people who are elderly, who have dementia, who need to be committed, or they might be alcoholics, or, like, I had a case when I was in Gardendale where a man had fallen and broke his arm, but he was not calling. And he had had surgery to repair his arm, and his family had said, hey, you got to help us. We had to file a commitment on him to get him sober up enough just so he could get to the hospital to have this surgery, or they were going to have to cut his arm off. Okay? That's the kind of greatly disabled we're talking about. So just, just being an addict, just maybe not being sensible isn't going to be enough. But you have taken the cert back, it's like I was talking about, the temperature outside. If it's 3 o'clock in the afternoon and somebody's wearing a heavy jacket and they're being nonsense, well, maybe that's an extra, that's an extra layer there that applies. Or if it's really cold and they're running around shorts and t-shirt, they're exposing themselves to the elements in a way that might be dangerous.
Could I ask the city council to give them a chance? I don't want to keep you all night, and we've got some other business. I appreciate you coming. Council members, let me give y'all an opportunity to ask him anything you want to ask him. Any of you want to ask a question or, or, you know, maybe give an example of what you run into or what?
Well, I don't know if he can answer it, because we're talking about the screen. So what does that really entail, and what happens afterwards?
Well, okay, here's, here's what can happen, okay? Let's say we have somebody that we believe is mentally ill, because maybe it's easier to deal with mentally ill as opposed to a person who needs to be committed because of drug or alcohol. So mental illness, those evaluations are done by Delta Counseling, and they are an evaluation where they determine whether or not the person meets this criteria. They have a trained person who does these evaluations. And I can't tell you exactly what all it is, but it's a series of questions, and they attempt, like, we had a guy, when I did these on regularly, was like, he would literally talk about people wearing temple hats. He would wear a temple hat. Now, wearing a temple hat doesn't make you necessarily greatly disabled or homicidal or suicidal. So a lot of times, we're talking about people who actually have a mental illness who are talking about harming themselves, or maybe talking about harming a loved one because they're not right-thinking, okay? Now, those threatening to kill somebody also is crime, and that's one of the other reasons why it overlaps with prosecutors almost. So one, one of two things could happen in one of these scenarios is a loved one, a family member, or caregiver will come to, will call up Ben and say, hey, I need to get a commitment, because this is a person that unfortunately, we have a lot of repeat customers with these scenarios. So they may already be going to Delta Counseling, and Delta Counseling may, at their regular meeting, go, hey, you're not taking your medications, or you're off, or what ever. And so they will prepare, obviously, we wouldn't do it this way, but oftentimes, there's a form they fill out, which is called a involuntary petition for involuntary commitment. And then if the person, if Delta Counseling do it, it's a lot easier because we can then ask the court to enter an order for immediate confinement. They can be sent to a hospital for a period of time before that hearing has to be held. Okay? Let's say if it was just you called up and said, I want to fill out this petition, I would have you come and meet with me, and I would go over and have you tell me what all the facts are that made you believe that this person was homicidal, suicidal, or greatly disabled. And sometimes it might just be as easy as, hey, he's, he's talking about killing himself, and he's hearing voices and things like that. So we would file a petition, we would oftentimes ask for an order for immediate confinement so that the sheriff's office or the police department could go pick him up, take him to somewhere where Delta Counseling can come and screen them, okay? And then if they think that they have enough, then they can have to hell until we have hearing. That part is not required. The immediate confinement portion is not necessary by law. We can file a petition, they can be ordered to appear, like, just much like a person who was arrested, could be, okay, you're ordered to appear on this day, and we're going to have a hearing. They have the right to counsel, they have the right to remain silent, and in, unlike many civil issues, those things, those things don't apply. But in this, in this type of hearing, again, because you're taking away somebody's freedom, they, they're appointed an attorney typically before the hearing, and the judge would have take testimony about why they need to be committed. So that's, that would be the procedure that would happen. Now, sometimes we have disagreements with what qualifies as something that's a committable issue. We may decide that that's not enough or against.
I think, council member, if you should have a question.
Yeah, I did. And we're very much familiar with out of protective service and, you know, children and family service, et cetera. But you mentioned the police, community policing. Is there training? Because I would not think that, and I'm not just speaking for the Warren Police Department, but just, you know, our catchment area here, I don't think that they would have had that particular type training to even address the issue and approach and feel that they have not overstepped their bounds?
Well, if you're talking about, is there training out there? I believe that there is. I couldn't tell you what it is, but the Criminal Justice Institute would have training for that for officers.
But are other cities that you are, that's within your catchment area, are they doing the community policing?
Well, community policing is something completely different. Community policing is.
I know it's, it's establishing a relationship, you know, with that, with that individual.
And I think some of them.
And how they're doing that assessment.
Some of them, I don't think your officer's going to be qualified necessarily to say, hey, they can't say, because they are trained to determine whether or not they think somebody is under the influence of drugs or alcohol. So that's part of it, okay? Is this person acting this way because they're high? Are they acting this way because they are intoxicated? Are they acting this way because of something else? Like, maybe somebody's diabetic and they're having a medical issue. So I believe they are trained briefly, okay, small quantities about these types of things. And so, but the idea of community policing is a, is a much, is a much different topic than dealing with trying to assess somebody as whether or not they're dangerous to themselves or someone else, in my mind. Now, community policing is just a style of policing, and that can be implemented a whole different, different ways. But you're right, the idea of community policing is developing a rapport with the citizens of the community so that you have trust between the two parties. And I think that's important. I've agreed, Criminal Justice, I was going to be in law enforcement one way or another. I ended up here because I'm fortunate to get my mother.
Well, we, I would love, excuse me, go ahead.
Is that similar to what Little Rock has as far as what Officer Tommy Norman, the community policing?
They'll have different, yeah, a lot of, a lot of agencies may have different. Right. People or persons who are, do that. It also can come down to how, how you have the, like, some places have cities broken up with grids, and these officers are routinely assigned to this area. So they're in that area, people see them, and they, you know, just stop and saying hi to people is community policing.
And we, and we actually do more of that than you think we do. But bottom line is, we're fortunate to keep enough policemen on the payroll to patrol the town. I mean, we don't, you got to have a whole, you know, numbers of people, you got to have that, that, that's all they work at, is that kind of thing. We just, you know, found like Warren's really not.
You would have to hire someone to specifically address this as far as the community.
I think, I don't think you have to hire anybody specifically for dealing with.
Look at our overtime report.
Well, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, if you have an officer who's on duty and he sees somebody out sleeping in the park or appears to be sleeping, there's nothing wrong with them going over and saying hi and checking, talking to them and find out what's going on, much like the mayor was talking about. That's completely, now, does that take away from time that other officer could be doing something else? Yes. But you have to decide as, as the city governor, how you want the officers to spend their time. Is there a benefit to the city that the officers get out their car and talk to people? Yeah. Me personally, yes. Okay? Now, can, can the city, I mean, you're going to have to have some sort of event where you're going to learn, okay, this was worthwhile or it wasn't worthwhile. And if it means that you're going to have somebody, to me, if somebody's laying around in the park, I want my officers to find out what's going on. I don't want, I want my families to go to the park and use the equipment. Families are not going to go there if adults are hanging out there all the time. So it's, it's, it's something you, I think you just have to do, and you have to, to get it done. It's just how you go about doing it is the issue.
Let me see, then, Rip, we're going to have to move on here, or we could be here all night discussing that. And to be honest with you, and I appreciate everything he's saying and y'all's questions, we're talking about every symptom, we're still not figuring out what needs to be done to deal with.
The, the thing you need to do is, if you, if you want to criminalize camping in the park, or sleeping on the street, or those type of things, okay? You have to determine whether or not you have a city ordinance that already exists that covers those issues. If not, then you need to develop a city ordinance. I can't, I just can't legally do that for you, okay? That would be something you would need to. That would be something you would need to, I would get with...
Frank, I, I don't think any of us are particularly wanting to criminalize people that are having, you know, mental health issues, or substance abuse issues. We're trying to figure out how to deal with, how to give them help, and not where they're on a, on a revolving door basis, where they send them to Little Rock for two weeks to the state hospital, and the next week, they're back down here still camping out where they were. And by the way, they're not, and by the way, you know this, I'm not talking about camp, nice tents, like, where people go camping, I'm talking about people making homemade places and just literally getting in a corner somewhere, under our train down in the park, or, you know, places like that.
So, okay, so what people talk to me about, sometimes talk about, well, you're just sending people to prison because they got a drug problem, okay? Uh, and, and sometimes we do that. Uh, we're not doing it because they have a drug problem, we're doing it because it's illegal. And the problem is, my experience is, I've done this for twenty-six years now, um, going on twenty-seven, um, you can't get people's attention when they're so addicted to drugs that that's the only thing to take care of them. You have to change their lives. Now, if you can get their families to start a process to get guardianship over them, and they wanna take care of it, and guardianship is a legal method for them being in charge then, that's one thing. You generally can't get a family to do that.
That's hard.
Okay? So the, as, as, as the prosecutor's office, the only, the only method I have for getting somebody to do something is, is the character, the singer, the same thing. If you don't stop doing this, we're gonna send you here, okay? And we send a lot of people to, I, I don't, I'll be the first person, I can't stand a drug dealer, I hate them, um, I, I won't send everyone to prison, okay? Every one, because I think they poison people. That's how I feel about it. Uh, the people who use drugs, I don't have, I, I don't have the ability to make them go to rehab without charging them with a crime. And the same people who are doing it over and over and over again, we have to do something with them. The option we have is, the law says basically, if you get convicted of two or more felonies and you're not eligible, you get probation or suspended sentence. Bigger places, they tend to ignore that law, okay? We, we follow them. But what we have in our ability to do stuff with is, we have, we send people to what's called a community corrections center, which is a minimum security prison, which has a drug and alcohol and a therapeutic environment built into it, and that's where we try to send people. But there are only certain types of people that can go there. You can't go there if you're a violent offender, or a sex offender, you can't, you can't typically go there. Um, and, and so that, that's where we get sort of maybe stuck in. You might have somebody who's a, a drug user, who gets violent and has hurt somebody or threatened somebody, and then, so now they can't go to that place, and now we're stuck with sending them to ABC. But of course, we're not doing these things that we're trying to pick on people, we're trying to make the world safe, okay? And, uh, that, that's where we end up at. So the, if, if you want to be as non, if you, if you wanna be non-criminal with that, you need to get the community organizations together that will go out, try to help these people, and try to get them into a scenario. Problem is, some people don't want them.
We, we have experienced that, and some of them, there, there are some of these people out there draw social security checks, and they're not broke, not all of them, every situation's different, every situation's different. But I do know of one situation, the lady, I know she draws a check, and we, and we tried to get her a public housing. Well, the problem is, I think her, if she's got a son, that maybe does have some serious, you know, background, and, and, and he's illegal, he can't, he can't stay in public housing, and she won't go without him, and besides that, she really don't want to anyway. They find a vacant house, move in it, so if somebody finds they're in there, especially in the winter time.
Right.
I mean, it's...
And of course, that's, that is a crime.
Yeah, I know it.
It's, it's criminal trespass, it can be residential burglary if they're going in there for certain, if they're just going to get out of there, weather, that's probably just criminal trespass. If they're going in there and commit some other type of crime in there, that would be further.
And, and you understand this as well as anybody does, and council members, I know y'all do too, even in a lot of those cases, if we catch them and issue them a citation, you just might as well go out and spit into the wind. You solve nothing, except put more stuff on, on the books of the court, because you can't, you know, if you put them in jail, you're gonna have to, and you only put them for limited periods of time, and then they're convicted, and then, uh, and then they're right back out, and they're certainly not gonna pay you. It's, it don't solve the problem, and I, y'all understand that, everybody does. I'm trying to find solutions, huh, you know, long-term.
And, and I, I really, I, I personally think the, the long-term solution is everything working together.
Yes, sir.
Where you may have an ordinance that says this, because maybe you can get somebody off the street for a couple of days, and maybe get them sober up, or they go somewhere else, or, or whatever, but I, I suspect y'all don't even have a homeless guarantee down there.
Not that I'm aware of. We did years ago.
Yeah, we had the Oasis, Oasis Homeless Shelter that was here.
Now, we, we, you know, we do have substance abuse, uh, prisoners, right, right here.
Right, yeah, they're poor.
And, and so when you try to move some, I mean, you're talking about moving somebody out of the community to get them a place to live.
Yeah.
Um, and, and really there, if you, if, if you look at that case, a lot of what does the force that you broke the opinion, what it talks about is, you know, there's a whole lot of policy issues and, and having to deal with this. The, the issue they are addressing was, is it, is it against the Eighth Amendment to, to, to criminalize sleeping or camping in the park? And that's something y'all have to decide whether or not you wanna do, if you need to, to get an attorney to help you to run draft an ordinance if that's what you wanna do. Um, potentially, there's a move to be made where you, uh, get some citizens groups to try to help these people.
Let me see if anybody else, council member, any of y'all got any questions? Or, or comments? I, I, I know this, we could, we could literally stay here all night discussing, and I very much appreciate the prosecutor attorney, he tries to help us now. I'm, I hope I didn't come across like I was pouncing on you, uh, Mr. Prosecutor, because we've talked about a lot of stuff.
That would be new.
He, he works with us wonderfully, he really does. I'm just trying to figure out...
It's a universal issue.
Yeah.
Right. And there's no, there's no easy fix for anything. Um, the, I don't, I, I feel like we, as a society, sometimes don't want to help people. We don't, we no longer want to be able to go talk to somebody because we're afraid, well, somebody might perceive something we said wrong, and now I'll be determined to be accused of being racist, or homophobic, or, well, I just, you're just mean. People tell me I'm mean all day long, because I, I just say what I, I mean, I, I, I'm very plain.
Sort your job.
Well, but we, I think it is a decision we need to get over, is being worried about somebody saying we're something bad about us. Um, and of course, we have these phones where you can just tweet out whatever you want to, and you just can't really do anything about it, so.
Any, any other questions, Warren?
No, but we do appreciate your...
We thank you very much, Frank, and, uh, I may, you wanna make sure I got contact with, with Ben?
Sure.
And, and, and here's the interesting, one final thing about our situation, I think I started on this when I started my comments, and I wondered all, because I sometimes do. We're probably talking about, all seriousness, maybe a dozen to twenty people right now in the city limits of Warren, that's actually in this situat, out there just on the streets, okay? We're not talking about fundings now. I got people calling me saying, you got hundreds of people out there, you know, that's not true, but they're seeing the ones that are, and they're just, you know, moving all around town, setting up these little, uh, these little camp sites, so to speak, sometime three or four of them, sometime just one.
Sometimes our neighbor in our city will bring some over to the county line.
Right.
We have had that issue, which I don't think I've talked to you about.
One, one thing that the criminal justice in the state of Arkansas's current, the system is currently experiencing is, there's a procedure when someone is, like, let's say you're charged with a, a, a crime, uh, whether it be residence burglary, whether it be some sort of violent offense, there, there's a, a defense of, you've all heard talking about being mentally, mentally ill, having mental defect, and there's a procedure that goes through that, there's two parts to that. And I suffer from mental illness, and I didn't, couldn't perceive the criminality of my conduct at that particular moment. And there are people who've fallen that kind of one, you know, they just straighten the loose name of the facts, they don't, they, they're very rare. The other thing is, we, and, and a more difficult problem for criminal justice is, you have somebody who maybe after they've been arrested, or maybe even before they were arrested, have become unfit to proceed, meaning that they're not mentally capable of assisting in their defense. And statewide, we have an issue with this, where the state hospital, who, and, and Department of Human Services, who, when, when the court finds somebody not fit to proceed, he orders them to be award of the, of the, of the DHS and state hospital. And they look like just telling, they, we don't have space to take anyone. And so we have people, because of maybe their dangerousness, they're sitting in jail who need to be restored, and we can't get them into the hospital, and something's gonna have to change. I, I don't know what it's gonna be, but I was talking about the sheriff, to the sheriff, uh, one of the counties on, on the way over here, about that exact issue. So, I mean, I think they have like a hundred fifty beds at the state hospital that are set up to restore people, you know, or to treat people who suffer from...
Still building, yeah, also, more facilities.
I think the state is gonna have to do much more involved in this.
They got a ready exist one, and all they just put it on.
All right, anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, don't worry, I've got some other issues too, I'll, I'll talk to you about.
I heard you talking about one of them already today.
Thank you, thank you for coming, again, council members, we, we appreciate, uh, our prosecutor coming, he does work with us great, and, uh, and we appreciate it very much, and I, I just wanna make sure we're all understanding the best we can, what we can do, what we can't do, and, and apparently some issues are just hard to deal with.
Certainly call, I mean, if any one of you, any, any of y'all have a question, certainly call the office. I may not always be available to take your call right then, but I, I will get back to you. Um, I spend a lot of time trying cases, um, or in court, so me or one of my deputies will get back to you as soon as we can, okay?
Thank you for what the people say about you, you're pretty nice.
Thank you so much.